What's up everybody, this is the poker coaching study session and today we're gonna be looking at a hand history. Um David, David you're from Macedonia, right?
That's right.
Alright, well, tell us a little bit about this poker game you play then, the kind of the day you had and everything.
Yeah, so as you can see the hand history starts with thirty-two big blinds dead because we late redged this tournament. And we late redged this tournament because we started this session after a ten-hour live session. And it turned out to be another ten-hour online session.
So you played a full day live and then you came back home and said, oh wow, why not play a little bit of poker?
Yeah, that's right.
Game would never stop.
It never gets boring.
I haven't been able to do something like that for twenty-five years. You could do it in my twenties and thirties probably DJing like that, but man.
So here we are with thirty-two big blinds and a dream, let's see how it goes. Flop flop flop, we get this flop, check, bet kind of big, you guys like falling here? We have a pair, we're not supposed to fall on monop on board, but he sizes up his multi-way. I'm thinking there's a lot of EV continuing with the pair like this.
He betting the two people too, right?
Yes, he did. That would be enough for me to get out.
Yeah, I don't hate.
I like the fold. Good open.
Okay, so. Low jack versus high jack, right? What do you guys do?
You can, you could mix, yeah.
Yeah, I'm mixing, I'm gonna use some larger bets and checks.
How often do you mix and why do you mix her?
Fifty-fifty.
Okay, I would say you don't need to go large here, but the fact that it's a paired board with no connectivity really. Um, is gonna boost up the, um, the out-of-position betting.
So one of my first lessons I had with Matt Dash, like when he looked at my database, he was looking at some of the spots and he said. Whenever you take a flop out of position and it's up, you should lean towards checking.
Yep.
The one key difference I would say here is it's a super dry flop and I think a lot of our hands benefit from starting the bet. That can, anytime you get immediate folds, it's really good.
Okay, well. The machine says. You should check around eighty percent of.
Wow.
Seems reasonable.
So this is a classic spot where your range wants to check it out, you have a portion of your range I wanna bet, pocket eight, pocket nine, pocket ten. These kinda hands, but in like maybe the upper dangler and the pair of cards, if you have a seven, you bet. If you have a pocket eight, you bet, uh, but it's all like your range overall, everything is checking.
Can you see? Sorry, can you see where the check raises are coming from if you check and you face a bet?
I imagine it's could be fairly robust check raise range. Cause like low jack doesn't have many seven X, right?
Problem is your thirty big blinds effective, so I don't know how crazy we're gonna get here.
We're checking every seven, eight X and everything we bet on the flop kind of wants to check.
Forty-four percent decent.
So instead of betting, we wanna lean towards check raising, it's a lot more efficient. So always lean towards checking when you're in this kind of scenario. Here you go with a bet, it's not, try to check a lot more on this spot. If it's a raise, now we are just in the potatoes.
Oh.
I started looking at this end quickly before, but I didn't see that. So what the hell are you up to here?
Yeah, that's a good question.
That's a good question, right?
This is, uh, this is the ego saying screw you guy, you don't have anything.
Yeah, the problem is I don't think we really have to raise, uh, three better over pairs here, I think we probably are just calling, right?
Uh, you probably are just calling here a lot. Okay, he is actually taking some of the suited wheels. And, uh, I mean, the deuce is two pair, but the five and the six is pretty interesting. So I mean, it's like, it's not crazy. Like the portion of the range he's pulling from.
Okay, okay, there's a little bit of merit here in that crazy raise back, but honestly, should you be just checking? If you wanna play aggressive, you can check raise a lot better. Now let's see what happens.
He probably folds.
Well, that's spicy, very spicy, go for a check raising strategy instead.
It's a pretty good flop.
What kind of size do you go for here?
I probably just go small personally.
Yeah, I probably use a mergey bet around half pot.
You know, I wanna go big, cuz a lot of his range would connect with that board a little bit.
Well, I mean, you kind of got equity there. Oh, you got really good equity, you kinda got like the super nuts here, right? Like.
Right.
And also your thirty big blinds effective, like you're just not gonna go too crazy at thirty big blinds that frequently, this is probably fine, but. I would probably bet small, I think.
Yeah, but the thing is like the range. Uh, on the flop. Our ins expecting small mostly.
Yeah, that's what I would think.
If there's never a big bets. So like, yeah, but the bigger, the bigger size you can go here is kind of fifty-five percent. Whereas here you really size it up. Think your hand is a little bit too strong here to size up that much.
Well, it's also a function of locked up equity, I think, like if you replace that eight with like, let's say, I don't know, a five. Where there's no, or, well, yeah, or a six where there's like no, there's not as many like made hands available. You'll see some more polarized betting here, you'll see larger betting.
Six is still pretty dynamic, oh, six, yeah, there's six, yeah, six is still more dynamic, so you might size up or five, you might still bet small.
I think a five would bet larger because there's no made straights.
Alright, so for those who missed the beginning, this is what we're looking at today. And now, yeah, a little bit less here, like alpha max and then mostly that's all.
To be honest, so it's not really a mistake, it's fine.
Barreling this turn, I don't like it, what do you guys think?
Versus big blind, probably good versus big blind, right?
Not with Jack ten, oh yeah.
I would say, I would say it is good with Jack ten, I mean, how many King X does he have here that you're really concerned about?
Well, I just feel like we don't pick up equity in our end, like we don't gain anything from a king turn, our range, yeah. Our range is, it's a good card for a range, but.
I mean, you got a pair and a straight flush draw, open-ended. I don't even know, I think it kinda breaks the rules a little bit with that, you just have so much.
Yeah, okay, so that's a good size.
Yeah, see a flop.
Good flop.
This is a good check raise candidate.
Definitely, I would always check racer. Very nice.
It's a little large, I think, but it's fine.
But yeah, this deep, right, this deep, you probably.
Yeah, you, you don't need to go quite that big at twenty-five.
Where the half X is that big out of position?
It's just he's only twenty-five behind, so it's, you're, you're just gonna be isolating verse his like pure ace X. It's fine, it's fine, it looks good.
Yeah, the machine says it would take seven, so. It's good.
Jam.
Yeah, all in.
Yeah, this is way, 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 way too small.
I'm always going all in here.
You should.
Yeah, you gotta rip it.
This is fine, yeah, I mean, he put it in, but it's whatever.
What is this?
I don't know how you win tournaments and running into aces, but you did it, so congratulations. Alright, this is a less interesting spot now, okay, like if that guy didn't overcall. I would be really curious about making a call.
If he doesn't call, it's very close, right? Because we have.
I think.
Booty, but.
Yeah, you got a booty on the line, I think you're supposed to call if the other guy doesn't overcall, this is a fold now though.
Oh yeah, suit that, I think so, yeah, okay. Hmm.
Running into aces again.
What are you doing, man?
I, I think I was, I think I was calling for sure if, if there wasn't a cold call behind.
Yeah.
And you should, this is probably a smidgen wide.
The border maybe?
Yeah, I would say you're probably drawing, like King nine is probably in there, I think King eight.
Do you open jam King nine?
Uh, yeah, I don't think you're opening not all in sizings here from ten big blinds and a bounty.
Right, yeah, I think King nine's the, uh, bottom.
That being said, I, I don't think you're making huge EV mistakes here, but I feel like this has gotta be close.
Yeah, zero percent.
So you see the EV, the EV is actually negative point one, so you're definitely close. Under the gun, see King nine, there it is. Um, there is a limping strategy here, which is pretty interesting, but, uh.
A smidgen wide.
It's a smidgen wide, like I don't think you're making a huge mistake here though.
Oh.
They're, they're hungry.
Oh.
Eight, I thought it was gonna be the heart.
Yeah, on the turn, he knew it was there, not going.
Alright, this is a good hand, jam, I would just keep it easy, like you could do this, this is okay, I don't think this is bad. First thing I would say though, like looking at this is you're at a position three betting size seems to be very small, very small.
I mean, it can be small, but not that small, I think he's still gotta go three, three point two X, then that might just make it a jam. I didn't figure out how many chips he had.
It is not going in.
Yeah, twenty-five, I think, so he can go like six still.
Six point one.
Yeah, six point one, I was gonna say.
So a little bit bigger, but, uh, closer. Uh, I would bet very big here, I wouldn't bet small, what do you guys think?
I don't think it matters, he's sixteen behind, like.
I think it's a small C bet too.
Yeah, I, I, I think if you were deeper, that would make a lot more sense, I don't think it really matters too much.
I'd like the bigger bet on the flop, seven. Seven and two fourteen, alpha.
Yeah.
I like a bit bigger.
Uh.
Happy day.
Oh man, she had ace, I thought it was like.
He thought we're done again, no, we're gonna.
But not only did he play ten hours live and then late register, but he also re-bought.
This is good.
The freeze out game, I like that, good flop, oh my goodness. You scanned pocket kings, let's go.
That was an amazing flop, great post-flop effort. Um, this is, this is.
Fine.
Good.
Okay, maybe, maybe more of a call.
So my question is, David, if he four bet jams, what are you doing here?
Hold. Yeah, so that's, this is why it's a disaster to treat that with this.
Right, exactly, as Louis is explaining. If you can't call a four bet jam with a hand this strong, you probably shouldn't be three betting it.
Yeah, but you can't fold it, right? It's thirty, thirty bigs.
This is the like the strongest call.
So like.
It's Jack suited.
In the PKO, don't you wanna be isoling?
No, not with the.
So the, the concept still applies, like just because there's a bounty on his head. It doesn't change the performance of ace queen suited versus a four bed jam, like it's still gonna be like. Close to zero EV at best if the guy's somewhat balanced.
Also here, this being a PKO, it's even more of a call because this guy could reshove, this guy could reshove.
Yeah, honestly, this is a great trap hand here where like if you call here and you get like one of these shorties to jam. This guy with a thirty is gonna be going in, probably wider to making this a much more profitable call in that situation.
Do we blast this flop?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, if you three bet pre-flop, you should be definitely blasting this texture.
This is never a check.
Never a check, no, no, like, uh, you got the backdoor flush, you flop a gut shot. And it's two Broadway cards, you should definitely be betting. A third or half pot here.
Yeah, I think it's probably large, right?
I would think it's a third or half. It's a problem because you're just not in the tree, like you're gonna have to look at a smidgen.
We can look at other hands next to it, right?
Yeah, you can look at similar hands, I suppose, like look at the offsuit branch, that'll, that'll help out.
Or small.
You don't have a checking range on this, that's what I thought, so very often, okay, almost every time, whenever you three bet, you wanna see that the flop. And if you do it small, it's almost always gonna be good, the deeper you get, you can size up to off pot. Uh, but you don't have a checking ranger. And I drew that. Okay.
Ooh, you can't fold here, this is, this is no bueno.
Number one, you don't have a checking range, and number two, in a three bet pot with this SPR, you got this stone cold nuts.
Well, like, even, even if he does have a king here, you're drawing pretty live, like an ace is probably, he doesn't have ace king really. Cause he would probably four bet pre-flop, right? So an ace is probably good for you. A ten's gonna be a chop in some cases, but it's still good for you. A queen, like, and that's versus a king, he shouldn't have a king here all the time, like he's gonna have a ten here, like this could be Jack ten, this could be diamonds.
Yeah.
Could be Queen ten, like there's all kinds of stuff that you're still performing quite well verse.
This is not good at all.
Yeah, I would, I would be, uh, you definitely need to be stickier here.
So another note for you here.
Well, I just wonder if it's like MDF work, could be like MDF work.
Well, no, it's really like how to play a three bet pot as the aggressor when this, the texture favors your range, right?
Okay.
Yeah, if you see bets, it could just would have been over, maybe.
Yeah.
Hmm, I like raising here.
Yeah.
Call, yeah, just see a flop.
Scan.
So if you had a spade, I would continue there, but without the spade, I think you need to fold.
Me the spade on the flop?
Yep, if you had a spade on the flop.
Would this be good?
I still don't think we get to fold.
You might be right, Ken, like, um, you, it may be like, this may be good enough with the two overs and the three to a straight. But I'm, I'm thinking like me personally, if I had a spade on the flop, I would continue here.
Yeah, I mean, it was a larger bet, so.
So you're right, Ken, like it's like a zero EV continue.
Yeah, but with the spade, so we had King, Queen.
They're all calling.
With clubs? How's the EV, it's still zero with.
It's just cuz you're in position.
One.
No, 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 you gotta look at hearts, Louis, you gotta look at hearts, this is.
Hearts is easy, but clubs, I mean, I wanna get like.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, clubs, so it's marginally better, marginally better.
Like a little bit better.
Marginally better, yeah.
So you'd need like King, Queen of clubs to continue with it. Uh, don't mind.
So I think this is okay verse the cutoff, if this was the button, I would probably be jamming combos like this, and this honestly might be a jam.
Yeah, but you're, you kinda wanna like keep the big blind in, right?
Well, so it's not that I don't wanna keep him in, I kinda wanna isolate the pot and as the aggressor here. Cause like, okay, let's say you call here and what do you do if the big blind jams and then the cutoff jams? Like you just lose, you lose the pot.
Yeah.
Is that the, uh, I'll just check the range.
Want me to pull it up?
I'm just curious if, if I'm over, if, if I'm imagining this too aggressively.
No, hundred percent call for a flop.
So. Hundred percent call, right? Verse RFI, small blind verse.
I think you should kinda let this go on the flop.
Okay, if even verse the button, you see some jamming from like fours and fives, but it's too aggressive. To jam.
A little bit deep too.
Yeah, forty big blinds is a bit deep.
You wanna jump like his king, right?
Well, no, you, you are jamming here with like fours and fives, is what I was saying, but ace king, it's ace queens is the one that's jamming, you're suited tens.
Do you like the call here?
Uh, let's take a look.
I fold.
Hey, I don't like it all.
I think it's sticky with maybe fives.
This guy could rejam, uh, this is.
It's a three-way pop and yeah, I think not closing the action and having like a range behind, I just like folding here.
From the big line, maybe, maybe would be a very questionable caller, actually from the line, I don't think we can fold that pair against late positions, just one.
Well, it's also ace four.
Big blind, but not goes in the action, this is a disaster.
I understand it, but I don't.
Now you gotta bluff.
Do we need to block here?
Well, the ten now, I don't know, I mean. I think I just checked.
Just check, you're not in the tree, you're not gonna be able to see this, I don't think.
Yeah, he hits the ten.
You got scared.
So a path to victory on that hand was you could have maybe led turn when the, when the second card paired.
Um, is this good enough to flop? Cause I'm three betting very heavy here.
Yeah, I'm three betting.
Um, I like three betting here because the, the blinds are so short.
Okay, so it's not, it's more of a call.
Well, you also have to kinda like adjust for the situation a little bit, like look at a big blind and look at the small blind.
Yeah, 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 definitely.
So I definitely wanna present an uncapped range here versus the guy with forty-nine big blinds.
Do we like a big bet from here?
Um, it's prob, it's probably fine, this.
Usually, it's usually small button versus cutoff, usually the, the, uh, float.
Guy here checks fifty percent of the time, that's small, the other up.
Most of the time it's small.
If you had a combo to bet large, this is it.
Yeah, there are, there's gonna be some large bets, but predominantly small, I think.
Oh, well, it's mostly betting on the alpha side of things.
This one like.
It's four and two seven, so it's, okay, this is good.
I mean, you got the heart behind too, vulnerable strength. I like jamming here, I think.
I think it's just a three bet.
Yeah, three bet.
What? Look, look at the big.
Well, he's got ten big blinds, he wants them to rejam, I guess, I mean, it's not, uh, it's probably not terrible.
This is silly, this is, I think this is silly.
I, I would always treat that here. Like I never.
So like, one thing I think you should kinda keep in mind here is unless you have like the uber uber nuts. And there's like a bounty at stake, you need to present this guy an uncapped range, otherwise you're gonna have a very hard time like. Getting access to these bounties.
Yeah. If anything here, we need to get this heads up right away.
Like, I, I, I don't know how eager you wanna be playing like, uh. Playing the caller in a hundred big blind pot here, but that could very, that could very well happen.
This type of hands will play heads up a lot better than multi-way.
Yep.
That's for sure.
But it, it works out here, this is, this is fine. Um. I like calling here mainly, I think you can raise this. For, versus RFI from the big blind. Yeah, you're actually, how deep are we, forty big blinds?
We're gonna get one call, right?
Yeah, you can't fold yet.
Check, Louis block.
I bluff.
Not a bluff, it's a bluff.
Yeah, I mean, I go like, yeah, third pot, whatever.
Hey. Who's hand history we gone through?
This is what we're looking at, Louis, this is David from Macedonia.
Oh, okay, that's cool.
So do we block that?
Yeah, I think so, the seven and eight are pretty breaky for button, so I mean, I.
You got like, you got like fourth pair, why would you not just check?
Those checks.
What kinda block bet do we find here? Take a guess.
You need stronger, you need like an eight or something, an eight would be good, maybe a seven.
I think it's seven.
A seven, it's a seven block betting.
I think so.
Maybe, maybe.
Queen.
Queen's easy, I mean, that's a value bet, you need to find the small bets, so a seven's a good one. An eight's a good one, an eight's a basically a value bet here some of the time. It looks like sixes and sevens are kind of where this blocky side is coming from.
Six, look at this, miss frequency on the six.
Yeah.
But not, not pocket six.
That's a set.
That's a, that's, yeah, that's a very strong hand.
So fives, for example. Okay, so there's a sliver of that, that's what pocket four.
I'm calling.
I don't know.
Why get the raise?
I don't think this is a call.
What, what is he repping though?
He ain't got shit, that's what he's repping.
For, for me, it's an easy call.
So my question is, what was the action? It was like, did he bet the flop?
Bet flop, check turn.
Yeah.
Okay, so like, this is probably not a queen.
It seems like a marginal made hand.
Maybe it's like he could do this with six, seven, seven, eight.
Jacks, tens, nines.
He shouldn't have Jacks, tens, nines too frequently, cuz we didn't check raise on the queen high.
But he's got Jack X and ten X in his bluffing range, right?
Yeah, I suppose.
Like, he's got plenty, you should have plenty of bluffs here, I ain't folding.
Well, it's a fold on the machine. It's calling ten percent of the time.
Ace three is a better call than, um.
Pocket four, two pair, it's a little wide, seven, six is a bit wide.
He opens off suit.
What?
Right, so he connects with the eight, connects with the queen.
To be honest, I think this hand's completely fine and I kind of like a fold, um. Myself.
Yeah, I, yeah, I like a fold.
You opened seven, six off from button?
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Really?
All of the, all of the connectors, offsuit connectors, I open basically all of them except for like three, four.
I missed them.
Well, it's in this range here, so.
This is big line, right?
Yes. Well, pocket four is mixing heavy, but mostly folded.
There's, can I see the button range?
It calls with the spade. This is a button's range.
So seven, six is a bit wide, thought so. But it's fine, it's not, like, it's just a bet now, I'm not saying it's speely, it's just wide.
Uh, I think, uh, this isn't the opening range.
No, that's not, no, that's not the opening range, go pre-flop.
You gotta go pre-flop to look at the, what he's actually doing. Seven, six, okay, it is a bit wide here. At forty, I guess is what that is.
Six, check, airboard, ace, have a heart.
Got a check, right?
I'm playing check in the middle.
I don't mind checking. Have a heart, we could, uh.
Nah, I, I hate that, I hate that bet.
So my only challenge is, is what's the plan like for facing aggression, like if that ten big blind stack jams over this, what do you do?
Uh, that's a good question, probably call.
Yeah, it's hard, right? Like, y- you probably should call, I don't know, like, uh.
I think having a heart makes it especially bad to be calling. Um, I would rather call without a heart, at least it gives him a couple more bluffs.
Heads up against him, it's a range bet. And heads up against him, I think it's a range check.
Yeah.
So I guess checking is better than anything else here.
Yeah, you have to check here.
Yeah.
Can I get one or two?
It's a versus small blind range. It's probably fine. Uh.
Never calling here, oh, doesn't matter.
Yeah, honestly, it doesn't matter, yeah, I like putting the chips in here, going for the double booty.
Yeah.
Oh, this PK, this is a PK.
That's what, that's what booties mean.
We lost.
I like calling here. I like playing very passively, I don't like playing aggressively here. Uh.
Call once, right?
Yeah, you, you got a hard man, you gotta call once.
Do you have to call with two people left? Like I'm thick saying, I would defend if it folded to me in a big blind, I'm gonna stick around with the heart, but do we really? Do you have to call with two people left? Like I'm thick saying, I would defend if it followed to me in a big mind, I'm gonna stick around with the heart, but do we really gotta stick around here?
We could river a seven. We could river. Good and buy some, some very low frequency of the time.
Also, like, you gotta think about it. Like, okay, like the guy, the big blind, he's double checked this board now. So he should be relatively capped. The guy in position on the button. He shouldn't be checking back too much value on the flop here, having position on this pot. Like if he's got pocket aces with a heart here, you think he's ever checking or something like that, you know? Or a king, for instance?
I was just strictly thinking about four players at a handy outs or someone else having a better heart are pretty good. Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, but it's a small bet and nobody else has called yet.
Well, we also have a pair.
There, we could hit a seven. Like we don't have a clean equity here. We all agree. But we have enough equity to keep floating just a little bit to see what what happens. Like you could go hard, check, 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 and we win. It could go a seven and then who knows? And so we don't really have clean equity, but we have some form of equity and we want to realize.
I would definitely continue here.
Oh, I like calling.
And let's see if they show down. No, they don't show down. Okay. I'll complete here.
Oh wait, I misread the hand.
So our minimum defense frequency though, right? I would say our minimum defense frequency four way. It's like. But it's so small.
You can't uh, you can't necessarily um. Equate that on the turn just because it's not equally distributed against all players in the hand and considering two of those players are relatively capped at that point. It kind of makes it difficult because a little more of the earnest lies on you and the other guy.
Why then your range wanna rely on scammy hands to continue like this pocket seven?
I actually think the weight falls on the button there, Galen, more than us.
Well, he's, he's also checked the flop. So it's like, that's what I was saying. I think he's, he's relatively capped there, but I, I don't know. It's hard to look at those spots, right?
I like a call here.
I don't, I like this.
I like ripping. I like to rip this.
You like to rip?
Uh, I mean, I don't hate. You might as well get the chips in on your equity. You get all that way.
Louis, it won't show the answer on GTO wizard because it went to the flop multi way.
Yeah, we understand that, Joey. We still, we can maybe look at the solution heads up. Just to kind of get a um idea.
Yeah, because this guy doesn't matter at all.
No, he doesn't.
Uh, so queen ten off?
I mean, we're already, we're already looking at almost a one to one SPR.
You have zero fold equities, which might make it not a thing, but.
I think you're just too shallow to really care. You gotta, you gotta flush draw and open ender. Like, I don't know what else. It might call, but I would be surprised. I mean, it's like seven.
I mean, we have a flush draw and a straight draw.
I can't even see his bed size. It's kind of hidden.
That's for big one.
So like half pot?
No, you gotta go smaller though. It's a multi way pot, so that's not representative of the proportion.
He went like twenty, twenty-five percent pot.
Yeah, you you gotta play for a small bet. So queen ten off is not raising ever. But it's doing a little bit with the spade. You also, you gotta look at it a little bit shallower with SPR wise. Like you need to make it like fifteen or fourteen effective.
That's what I was gonna say because if you used a large bet, that'll line up the SPR better.
You understand what I'm saying, Louis? There's a third person in the pot, so the proportions are a little bit different.
Okay, so bet bigger?
No, 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 no. The, the effective SPR is gonna be shallower.
Yeah, but if you bet bigger, that'll reduce the SPR, right?
It's gonna change his range, but yeah, you could look at that too.
Well, he only really bets small, so. We'll say bets three, maybe.
It just knows we're up against aces here.
The bigger he bet, the bigger he bets, the more we fluff. So it's more of a just.
Can you, can you do it the way that Galen asked?
Well, you see what, you see what I'm saying though? It's like there's eight big blinds in the pot already and there's fourteen behind. So the proportions are a little bit different than you're representing with that sim.
I looked at both, right?
What, when you bet, when he bets three, he only has aces. So that's going to influence our call range.
You gotta go to MTT, go to change the effective stack size. You have seventeen, you gotta make it like, I don't know, fourteen.
Yeah, fourteen's good.
Now this will be more representative because now you can.
And then go one point eight.
Yeah, now this will be truly representative of like what we're kind of looking at. So now we have some frequencies of jamming here.
With the, with the queen of clubs.
With the queen of clubs. So this. This is pretty close to what he's experiencing there.
Yeah, but still majority call.
I, I like to.
Yeah, it's fine. I'm, I'm just, there's merit is what I'm kind of getting at here. So, you know, you could definitely call. You could jam, whatever.
You, you can be in it and call if you want.
This shallow, I would be shocked. I think you're just running your equity here, Louis.
Put it in, David.
Make the nuts.
We were so close to a straight flush.
You almost, you had too many outs on the turn there. Like I'm surprised you won this hand with as many outs as you had on this.
Too many outs, man. Surprising, isn't it?
Uh, okay, this is, this is tricky. I think in PKO land, you can justify a jam here.
I don't like a jam. I think it's.
Yeah, well, it's, it's gonna be a folder, a jam, right? I'm just, the EV, the equity would, or the EV of those situations would be close.
Think it's.
I like, yeah, I like folding. I think folding's good.
Like you open EP, EP flats, this guy jams into us. It's like that.
Hey, that's a good flop. I like a call here, I think, flopping the nuts.
I also like to call.
I think you just call again, right?
Honestly, I would probably play it the same way. I usually take aggressive turn actions.
Yeah, I like that as well. The king, spicy king.
Uh, do you guys agree that out of position, we should take more aggressive uh, turn actions?
I think before the equity completes on boards, it's oft, it's important to kind of get value from his draws. That he could be double barreling and polarizing with.
Also, before you look at that, you want to have a grip of textures and actions based on textures because that matters a lot more. For example, here in general, the motion on multiple boards, you don't do big bets, you don't do much raising at all. And at this SPR. What is it? Four? At low SPR, when you have the nuts like this here, you do everything you can to keep the opponent there.
Yeah, you do, you do slow it down quite.
Yeah, I'm curious what the check raise frequency is on a turn. I, I think it's gonna be really low.
You think? I would be surprised. I think it's gonna definitely take some aggressive action on the turn.
Your call over there.
Oh, look at that. Yep.
But on the flop, we have the forty percent raise small. We have a.
Yeah, but as we said the previous hand, the primary action is to call.
And if we call the turn, do we also check the river?
That's a good question. I would wonder that. You might dunk jam it.
I think it really depend on the river, like.
Give it a brick, like two of, make it like the three of hearts or something.
Do a lot of checking, I think.
Yeah, this will be interesting. I bet you jam.
Checks, so.
Wow, pretty savagery.
So yes, you check, you check and you per, check and per. Please don't check.
So like for me, when I get check raised on the turn, it's just like, to in my mind, like it's almost always just.
Like for this guy, it's really easy here to get off the hook. You really like, your opponent is a bit out of line here. Because I think anyone willing to win money at this game would fold here. King, jack, no faith.
See, we're also kind of like, I don't know, we're discounting the PKO effect here, like. They are gonna agree, they are gonna continue a bit wider to get. But I don't know if it really influences the action that much.
I don't call enough here, probably. What about you?
Uh, I stepped away.
Twenty-five effective probably.
Only position raise you can call.
Yeah.
What are you, what are you calling with jacks? I think as you approach. I was gonna say, as you approach the button, it becomes more and more of a raise, especially in a PKO, man. Like you cover the guy.
I like this.
Big betting on this texture or this hand, one pair. Like, you know what? This texture is gonna get aces to check a lot and it's not for like work traffic. It's like this is a disaster of a texture.
Tens and jacks will size up though, right?
I like this, to be honest, like their calling ranges are gonna be very condensed around these middling boards. You're double blocking the absolute nuts. Like they're just gonna stack off with a ten here or like a nine. Oh, or nine, seven.
Yeah, but we get there. I tell, I tell you in MTTs.
Bet.
Yeah, I'd bet.
Gotta probe this.
Bet like two.
Why small? Why not?
Oh yeah, I think you bet big. Probe the turn pretty big there, I think.
Is this not a raise?
You wanna raise your offsuit stuff there more than your suited stuff.
The deeper you get, the more suited stuff just lets.
Yes, whoever said that is correct, I think. I'm not raising this pre flop. I'm playing um, I'm playing limp call here a lot.
Okay, cause it's a majority raise. Seventy percent of the time. There's gonna be a triangle here.
Just we gotta be a bit deeper to just flat it.
Small line.
Yeah, it's on the uh, the bottom end of that little blob there of strong enough.
And honestly, my offsuit A, I don't really raise with that because it's like. The bottom of my limp call range. Whereas everything else is the top of my limp full range.
Well, you also have to think though, like here, when we're looking at this, these suited combos represent a quarter of what you're seeing here in the offsuit branch. So like three quarters of a full, three quarter frequency of a suited combo is still like less than. You know, half of an offsuit branch. So it's like queen eight offsuit is. The primary aggressor compared to this one. Where you've got sixteen combos compared to the four combos.
Yeah, yeah, but it's also like if you look at your limping range. Uh, this is like the worst limp calls you're gonna make.
Oh yeah, for sure. That's why I think.
Limb, jack, seven off, you don't call back the raise.
So you like raising the offsuit eights, OP?
Uh, I just said, this is the bottom of my limping range.
Oh, limp call. Okay, so you limp call that.
This is the, the bottom of my calling range when I limp. Limp, you face a raise and then these are my worst balls. And then these I raise because it's easier, because it's straight up junk.
But yeah, I mean, this is fine, play. But after it goes check, check, this is like one of the best lead cards you have in the deck. I would be betting like five or six here.
Yeah, it's pretty much a mandatory bet, I think. Probably gonna be pure.
I agree with the bet. I just think it's smaller. Alright, I was wrong.
Yeah, it's a big bet. When you probe.
Yeah, I, I could see myself overbetting here. I mean, like, okay.
A six into eight, fine, but ten to eight, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not doing it primarily. But so it's like, you have ten high, you picked up basically one of the best turn cards in the deck for you. Like you need fold equity or you need to hit.
Also, think about this this way, okay? If you hit your scan card on the, on the river by some miracle, okay?
You get it all.
Be, you wanna be able to play first stacks. It's gonna happen every now and then. We're gonna hit it. Like a tricky nine or like a diamond and then next thing you know, this is why you need to bluff the turn when you pick up equity.
I mean, you probably have forty percent equity here versus range on this turn card if he has a pair.
Yeah, very often, a very strong strategy. If you're looking at barreling turns, you pick up equity, barrel turns. If you don't pick up equity, don't barrel.
Usually, I, I usually barrel on these turns, but given that he checked the flop, I think I was going for a check raise on this turn card.
You know, I, I don't hate that. I don't hate that at a small frequency. Like I, I think playing check jam here is probably not crazy. You just have ten high, man. Like you have a hard time winning when you brick.
I don't, I don't like your turn raising strategy from what we've seen. I would rather have you check raising nuts.
Yeah, turn probes, turn probes are super effective when they miss a C bet on the flop. Like you can just get away with so many bluffs too when they fold. So you really wanna be barreling a lot on the turn.
Also, I don't like to plan a check raise after he checks. When he should probably be betting.
What do we bet on the river?
Uh, I think he checked or did he bet? Yeah, this is too small, I think. You gotta get one big street in when you got, when you get the flush here.
Yeah, we're just compounding mistakes anyway, so. I think it starts from that.
Last hand too, when I was talking about the, the ten eight, the suited. Uh, I, I noticed on GTO, it likes the offsuit stuff more when the effective stacks are more lower, like thirty bigs, twenty-five bigs. I was just kind of looking at that on my GTO.
I agree with you, Cody, but it's more like king jack off, right? Or like uh.
Even with like, even with like, uh, like thirty bigs, twenty-five bigs, ten eight suited there is just flattening and then calling and then ten eight off is more uh, raising there. Like three point five with thirty bigs.
Okay, and this here we were deeper. Was that, was that the difference? Um, I like it that's small here. Turn, I like a big polarized bet now, almost.
I, I think that's good, Louis. I think a big bet here is in order.
Wait, did he see bet the flop?
And then turn. Oh no, turn.
I think, I think the flop should be mostly checked when you flop top set.
Oh wow, you're right, Joey. No, it's a majority bet, but it's almost forty percent checking, heavy check frequency. I think the driving factor is whether you have the heart or not. And we have the heart, so we can check a bit more often.
Seems good.
But if he see bet, he has bet larger on the.
On the turn, definitely.
I would agree, Joey.
The machine said the turn off pot is preferred, so.
Oh, really? Okay.
So, I like a big bet here.
Yeah, I like three and a half or so. I think that'd be fine. This is okay. I don't think this is bad, but I would go bigger personally.
Well, he went about what, forty percent?
Mixing, but it's using big sizes a lot, right?
Yeah, you can use big sizings. When you can use big sizings, I think leaning that way is smart if you're gonna have a, a mixed strategy. This, so the turn card is actually a pretty good barrel, I think. Like um. He shouldn't have too much king, queen. You're, you're blocking king, queen. He doesn't have ace, king. You've got the heart. Like I, I think he's got a lot to call with.
This is a gin card, right? And I see you doing that, like the way you think about your turn. Like when you have the king of hearts, you wanna bet more and more. I think that's really good.
Yep, I think, I think that is a big driving factor here. Uh, this is, this is, this is not fun. You just call, you got a bluff catch. Yeah, you got, see when you.
Oh, no, no.
So when you check the turn, I think when you check the turn, you, you really need to be bluff catching here.
It's mixing, honestly, fifty fifty. But on a four liner, it's always good to fold. Keep that in.
Yeah.
And you avoid that by betting turn.
Yeah, 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 yeah. That's what I was gonna say.
You gotta always check back river often. If they dock, if you go bet, bet and they still dock, it's an easier fold, to be honest.
I would check back here. What about you guys?
I'm torn between jamming and checking back. I think versus a limp, man, like. I'm torn between jamming and checking back. I think versus a limp, man, like I kinda wanna put this guy in some.
Yeah, I'm ripping it's booty, right, toe? Let's go.
It is a booty.
Wow, you guys. Oh, it's raising. So you have to raise, okay. I was gonna check back. Suited, I think this kinda wanna.
Yeah, no, that's too much.
Jamming is no good.
So David, I do have a question. What stage, do you have any bearing on what stage of the tournament this is? Like how many chips is a blind right now? That'll help us out.
I think we are in the money.
Oh, this is early. It's only twenty-five hundred.
Or close to the money. Yeah, very early.
You've got like eleven, you got twelve starting stacks or so, or is this the double stack?
Yeah, no, twelve starting stacks.
Okay, fifty big blinds, twelve starting stacks, you should be, I think, right after the money or close to it?
Yeah, me too. We are close to the money or right after the money. Maybe it is a pressure all in here. If we are not in the money yet.
Uh, you gotta fold.
Happy days.
Easy call.
Oh.
That's not fun.
What is this term, man? No post flop effort here. Happy days.
I think you just jam, yeah, you just.
Just for a bet.
Oh.
Chup, chup. Oh, get me again. Why so big?
Well, yeah, yeah, what was this sizing? That's a good question.
I don't know.
Maybe misclick.
Yeah.
First time you did it, so it's probably just.
Yeah, probably.
Okay.
We hope, David, that this was a mistake.
I mean, there are some, hey, there are some situations where you can make.
If it's not a misclick, it's quite terrible.
He, he may have also misread the, the table and thought there was a limp.
May, could've thought he was small blind opening. I mean, there's a lot of shit there, right?
Yeah.
Dave? What the hell?
Nah.
Yeah, this isn't a thing.
Yeah, I think you're supposed to.
The double misclick.
Like you just lost this ace, king here, you chopped, so you're tilted now, you didn't get the.
I think he went to the bathroom and his significant others was sitting at the table for this hand.
You're gonna, you're gonna tilt Louis if you keep playing like that, he's gonna lose it.
David, what are you doing? Is that how you win tournaments?
Amazing.
You lay tries PKO and stuff like that?
Yeah, there's.
So how about this?
This should be like two big blinds maximum.
Well, let's talk about this. Why would you not wanna make this bet size?
Because it's a, it's terrible. You get your opponent to play perfectly.
Well, yeah, that's essentially, we're saying that, yeah, that, where you're saying.
He only calls you when he, when he has you beat, and then you scare him away from any future equity.
Exactly, so this bet size accomplishes nothing. It allows him to basically double up when he has po, when he has a ten, and it tells him to fold when he has anything else.
Yeah, so if you look at the new advanced masterclass by, uh, Jonathan Little and Justin Saliba, one of their first few classes, they discuss a pair of boards. So here, if you, if you watch, it's only fifteen minutes, by the way. Uh, they say that you gain a lot of EV if you just bet one big blind here. So, really like on pair of boards, you can range that small, but like Justin proved that if you, instead of betting small, you go for a one big blind bet, you can almost always do it, and it's closer to GTO, whereas betting small, good enough, but it's betting one is closer to GTO.
Yeah, one allows you to bet over your range.
It allows to do it almost always, so this is a one big blind bet.
How, however, can I just add?
Yeah.
It, it has to go up a slight bit because of his large raise pre flop. The one big blind works with a min raise pre flop.
That's actually a pretty good consideration.
I would, I would agree with that, Joey.
Because one, one big blind is, one big blind is about twenty-five percent with a min raise.
Yeah.
That's why I was thinking about two, about a twenty-five percent bet.
Yeah, but this machine here doesn't have the, the, the one. It has only twenty-five.
Yeah.
Whereas Justin ran really a couple of sims or spots, and there's more EV and going even smaller.
Yeah, one big blind. I'm okay with, with a min open, it's about eighteen percent, but yeah, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
This is a disaster, David.
Well, it's like, it's gonna be a positive EV situation, cuz you're just gonna take down the blinds a lot, but this is def, this is far from the optimal play.
If you bet one, then he spazzing to you, then you capture. Sometimes he has bluffs. When you do that, he never calls off with a bluff.
He never has bluffs, right? Like, he's not calling with a three here. If he has three, five, is he ever calling here?
No.
Probably not, no, right? Like, you're, you're just, uh, he, he shouldn't have pocket pairs here because he would've jammed him pre. It's just he has nothing to call with.
And that was a disaster.
This is, this is too big, man. This is way too big.
Well, he goes, he puts everyone all in. No, he does not. Oh.
No, like, that, it's too big. Like, he's thirty effective with this guy under the gun.
And this is a three bet small, right?
Yeah, I would three bet small here.
The guy opens from fourteen bigs, right?
No, he, he opens from thirty bigs.
Or did I misread that?
Yeah, there's an open over here off of a fourteen big blind stack.
No, a thirty, the thirty-two big blind stack.
Oh, the chips get, okay. You gotta, the chips look like they're in front of the other guy, sorry.
And Ken, even if, even if that be the case, you are fifty effective with the guy behind, like, um.
And, yeah, it should be like a five big blind, three bet.
You're just, you're, like, taking equity away from the top of your range.
Yeah, that's a good way of describing it, Louis, like you can play better, is essentially what he's saying. I like a call here.
Happy days. Hmm, all you, all we needed was one club, no post flop effort at all.
The flop looked really good. I was happy with that flop.
Yeah. I was counting chickens on that flop. I was, I don't think already.
I'm all in here.
Yeah, just put them all in.
Yep, that's good.
Oh, he had an open fold off of that stack.
This is great, this is great. Beautiful. Alright, we can see a flop here.
Yeah?
I think you can see a flop here.
What, what's your worst call here with the offsuit ten?
Ten, five.
I'm calling all my offsuit tens, I think. Well, no, no, I'm sorry. Ignore that. I think you're right. You're, I was thinking across to the right, not, not up and down. I think maybe ten-seven is probably the line.
Yeah, yeah, aren't we in ICM?
Not necessarily enough to bet.
Well, I'm thinking chippy, I'm ten-five oh.
Yeah, but this is after, this is probably around ten percent field.
Ten-seven.
Too loose.
Yeah, zero EV, zero EV, right?
I think, well, I mean, ten-five's too loose.
I think, um, what other justification are you gonna find to justify your, your, your nitty fold?
I'm a net, you know it. No one knows it.
You're never folding this in a PKOLP.
People think I'm a maniac, but I'm a big net. I'm a net and hot at heart.
I mean, this is a pretty good check raise hand.
Then short?
Yeah.
Five and three-quarters, something like that.
Nah, 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 nah. It's a draw, we're too short. SBR is too short. If you raise, you raise, you're like, oh my goodness, I have.
I wonder what queen ten's doing, if queen ten's actually doing it with the overcard.
Ten-seven, I bet those.
I don't think we have much raising here. We can raise flush draws directly, right?
Maybe.
Only, this is tricky.
Well, we have a.
If you wanna raise a single club, you can raise like the ace, no?
Look at the range, man, you can tell.
We can look at, I bet it's pretty high. Twenty-some percent. Oh my god, that's not it.
So it's not huge.
So it's raising.
Ten, fifteen, like sixteen percent, yeah.
This is typical. This is not too shabby, and if we look at.
Yes, we can use the flush draws.
Look at queen ten, look at queen ten off.
So ten-seven is a tiny bit more than ten.
Then on the, the clubs, the big clubs, yeah.
So it's basically the same hand he has, but with the overcard, which is important.
Yeah, exactly. We can pick like, I thought ace-ten would, a club would be in there, but no, look at this.
Look at king, king-ten offsuit's gonna be attractive too. Yeah, so like with this, you can do king-ten if you really want to.
King-ten with that club is easy, right? Upper dangler, my club, blah, 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 the gut shot.
Mm-hmm.
About the eight-two, you find the eight-two there?
Hmm, I'm not two-eight-two.
That was a big one.
Hmm, bet, the call, yeah. Check, check. Then I on the river.
I think you gotta give up.
I don't think so.
Yeah, king's no good. It's not our card, it's not our card.
Yeah, to give up. Go sort of that. I like that. Check, check on the darn. We shouldn't do it from the big blind, that's the issue. That's a mistake.
And what size if we bluff are we using here? Like, I don't know, it just might be like, if we bluff, it might be all ends.
Uh, no, six or three?
Those like this smaller bets, okay.
Not many all-ins.
Is it cuz he's so capped?
I mean, there's a lot of overbetting there. It's part of the strategy. You just don't have a huge part component.
This is a bit spicy. I would, I prefer to call here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this, as long as you're intending to call off that twenty big blind stack. But, um, I think calling's gonna be the optimal choice. Alright, just jams, just jams.
Go.
Well, how many effective are you? This says twenty effective, and you're actually like thirty effective, so this is a little misleading.
Yeah.
A little bit. It's a, it's a little misleading, so like raising with the intent to call off is probably okay, calling is probably okay. I don't think you wanna jam with the guy. But see, okay, I, I, I hate that, I, I hate this now.
Yeah.
I hate this now because it's like, um, if you're gonna raise this, you need to call this off, otherwise you're just torching equity with the, a hand that's strong. This is why we didn't, didn't want a three-bet ace queen earlier, because you can't call it four-bet.
What the hell are you doing, man?
I don't know, clicking buttons.
You're registered, you sign up for a poker tournament? You get ace-jack suited.
So.
Has a bounty. You get here and you fold.
So, yeah, you don't wanna raise to have to fold, but, I mean, it's possible you're on the bubble, I suppose. You said you were close earlier. I mean, that's the only reason I could think of folding, but if you're gonna fold, you can't raise, like Alan said.
Yeah.
You just don't wanna raise, oh.
It makes the EV of calling way, 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 way more attractive if you're ever folding this.
I'm always calling here.
Yep.
This is a lot.
Are you calling on the bubble?
Yeah, well, you don't wanna fold, and you don't wanna read that.
You just don't raise.
Also.
You said with this spot by not raising.
Also, if this is on the bubble, I take ace-jack's a pure call.
Yeah.
That's what we're getting at, Joey. Yep.
Perfect. Okay.
The hands you, uh, would be raised folding there are like ace-three offsuit or something, if you really wanted to have raised folds.
So, I have another note for you, David. That we're gonna add to our notes, okay? We like to raise suited aces almost every time, right?
Yeah, it's a good note.
Not aces do suit it. Keep that in mind.
Yeah, especially if a low jack is still pretty early positioned there.
Is the exception. It's the only raise that is not gonna raise.
You gotta open it from middle position.
You gotta open it from middle position, under the gun, that's true.
Yeah, middle position that's in there.
Oh, low, low jack starts cutting that out.
Right.
Nah, 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 nah.
Hijacking further, you can, ace, ace-two's good.
The only spot I fold, it's under the gun.
So I'm looking, uh, here, I'm looking at low jack, a hundred big blinds, it call, it raises eighty, it raises seventy, it raises seventy and mixes, to your credit. But it still raises some, sixty it raises, fifty it raises, forty it raises, thirty-five it raises, thirty it raises, like it.
Oh, well, okay, about twenty big blinds in the last, that's when it starts cutting out.
Twenty big blinds, you are correct. It is starting to cut out. But, um.
Thirty big blinds and guys played that.
Yes.
Yeah, dude, for this position, you joking me?
In a heartbeat.
Alright.
You have to.
You could fold off from under the gun, right?
Yes, I will fold, I fold it in early position.
I open it from under the gun.
Once you get to middle position, all the suited aces play.
Hmm. So here, I see that's small. Uh, checking is probably okay, but.
Is it a small C bet? I mean, ace-high boards, I know we see bet a lot versus small blind, but if two broadways might make it size up a little, ace-king, maybe?
Machine. Well, I think with the ace-king, when we do bet, we can bet larger, so it's gonna have some checking. When you bet larger, you check more.
What are you, I think you're looking at the wrong range.
Definitely.
It has folds, we can't open fold.
It's betting big most of the time.
Yeah, I thought so. Just cuz there's two broadways. If it was like ace-nine-three, then it's gonna be small, right? Like.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I take ace-king boards, we get to bet large, so when we bet large, we have to check some too.
Yeah, it's just more polarized, right?
Yeah.
Well, if we go check, check, the turn, we could bet, but it's a big.
Double, double flush, you're gonna go like, yeah, larger. Especially when you don't block any of them.
Yeah, I think you wanna see a flop. Ooh, this is.
Oh, no.
I think this is aggressive. This is a bit too aggressive. Like, if this was queen-ten suited, maybe we could justify this, but
Right.
This is a bit aggressive, I think.
Yeah, this is out of line.
A disaster. Why would you?
So, it's still positive EV, but it's, this is not the optimal decision, like, let's see what the, the worst queen he's doing this with, cuz he will have some jams here.
I mean, queen-nine or queen-ten, it's not, queen-eight is too far out of line.
It should be queen-ten, I think.
So, the bad special, queen-ten suited is in there, right? Queen-jack suited, what do you do with queen-jack suited?
Um, I like ripping it, I think.
What do you mean, it's a king-ten suited?
Uh, definitely ripping. So kings are better than queens here, because we're, queens are kinda blocking what we're targeting, right?
You know, that's, that range stands and adds up, right?
Yeah.
Multiway is it gonna be?
Jack-ten, ten-nine might even go with it.
So I'm looking at it, it's, um, a similar arrangement to this. It's jamming like.
Why are you looking? We're asking questions.
Well, I just answered a bunch of the questions.
Oh.
I mean, do we want more answers?
No, we're good. I mean, yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, I'm, I'm curious on, too wide with ten-nine suited, honestly, cuz I would.
So it's a pip wide, honestly. Queen-nine's in there, queen-nine, king-nine, jack-nine. They're all reasonable jams multi-way here at twenty-five effective.
Does ten-nine get in there?
Ten-nine does not.
Okay, I'm.
Queen-nine.
Bit wide.
Queen-nine does actually jam here.
What are you guys on?
So ten-nine's heads up, okay.
What are you guys talking about?
This is not the right range, I don't think, is it? Twenty-five effective? So you got hijack, small blind? Yeah, I'm looking at this in, uh, PFA.
So ten-nine is a jam.
Well, the ranges in PFA are different than this.
I don't know, are you guys, are you telling me you look at queen-nine suited here and you say, oh yeah, good jam, let's go?
No, I, no, I don't.
No, I'm saying.
But what I, what I am saying is the equities are razor-thin. If it's telling you to jam in one and calling in another, it's gonna be close.
Well, look at this, we got the king-ten suited wrong, we got the queen-ten suited wrong, it's not a jam. And then, yeah, queen-nine.
I had jack-ten, ta-da, I got half of them, right?
Ten-nine, Ken, what the hell is wrong with you? And what, what is it?
Nuts, it's the nuts.
Is it? You look at this, you see jet-nine-ten suited, you're like, okay.
Let's go, yep.
That's a rebound? Well, I don't get it.
Uh, it's a, it's a freeze out. It's on you, Louis.
Yeah. It's a freeze out to you. I don't get it. Uh, three bet heavy here. What about you guys?
He, I missed the.
I think this mixes, it mixes. You're, you're okay calling, okay raising. No calling is for nets. Uh, four big blind and multi-way like this, this is.
Not closing the action, I'm just.
It's a good fold.
Bet one. Don't check on pair boards or range betting.
You gotta bet small. You gotta bet small, man.
Yeah, bet one. This is just like, you put yourself in a spot where you should never be. Oh, my goodness. Why not bet yourself on the flop if you're gonna call turns like this?
Well, if he's bluffing, I'll slow him down.
Well, you made your bet.
He's supposed to be bluffing small pairs here, so I mean, I don't know if I, I just hate this.
It's a, not a good spot, right? You'd wanna have a diamond in your hand to make this call. The nine pairing on the turn, I mean, is this a call?
What are you, what are you gonna do, man? This guy's got all the chips in the tournament, so he should be raising a lot of his ace X pre-flop to isolate you. So he's already strapped on ace X a little bit. Like, I don't know, man. Like, he's gonna have a lot of bluffs here. This is not fun.
Yeah, but he's not short on nine X and you would wanna have a diamond to call.
Yeah, he has all ace X, nine X, but he does have a lot of everything else, so he has a lot of junk too.
Yeah, you check flop, you're like.
You cap yourself, like you kind of make your life miserable here because you checked this flop.
I mean, I would just fold, save my chips. See, so. Again, the fold is pocket twos here probably, right?
I mean, he's gotta fold a nine here. Like, if you do this, he's gotta fold a nine.
No way. He's only gotta put in twelve more bigs to win a pot of fifty-five, fifty-six.
We all agree with this one. Yeah.
Dude, this is spicy, David. Very, 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 very.
No way are they folding a nine.
Now, what the hell are you doing?
I don't think we need a jam here. Like, it, it doesn't accomplish anything if you can't get a nine to fold. I think Ken's right, like, the guy's priced in with a nine.
I was targeting a nine to fold.
You just beat all his bluffs by calling. If you just call, you beat all his bluffs. That's good enough. You don't have to turn your hand into a bluff.
There, there's a massive bounty on your head and this guy has a infinite, this guy is gonna eat you alive if he has. There's an old saying in poker, no one ever folds a full house.
Well, yeah.
The target thing on here is a disaster. There might be times that they should.
He's only folding bluffs here, which you beat by calling. So you can either call or fold. Like, you never do this.
Oh, my goodness, Dave.
Did it work? He folded?
He folded, but he never had a nine.
Right, so yeah, this guy had air, air, complete air ball.
This is extremely spicy, Dave.
Well, at least now he thinks you're probably slow playing like trip aces when he hit the flop.
So I, I mean, to take that back one step, I guess you do beat flushes that got there on the river, but still.
Now, you don't be with the ace, yeah.
You beat flushes as in they should fold.
Well, I mean, does a flush get to fold?
It's been saying falls and folds on the river.
Well, look at the EV. He's got, he's got one point four of jamming in there that you just left out.
Yeah, but we're also never in this three.
Yeah, it's a very, uh, very small branch.
And the mistake is on the flop. You should see that here, simple as that. And when you see that theory, it just folds and you save yourself a lot of troubles, especially for you, Dave. Yeah. All right. Real quick question, if we see bet on the flop and then nine pairs on the turn, do we double barrel it? Yeah, definitely. You're just about double barrel small, I think. What do you do with the nace here, Joey? You bet small on the flop, then you bet small again on the turn, right? Yeah. So the same goes with your box, I think. And this is a very good one, upper dangler to the nine. Uh, yeah, I, I would like a double here. And then when we double barrel, it just goes check, check on the river and we just went.
You gotta call. Nah, you gotta call.
David.
You gotta call. It's too good of a hand. This is a, this, a suited one gapper is just not gonna fold here.
Nope.
You're, you're so crazy and so nifty at the same time, so impressive. Like a king.
Okay, okay. These are the pots you need late in tournaments.
That's a little bit frisky, David.
I'm okay with this. It's kinda whatever.
Yeah, no, I take, I take it's a bit loose.
I think you're a bit loose.
Yeah, I hope you.
It's, it's only loose by maybe a pip, pip or two, so it's not that, it's not horrible. I just. Oh, what? Do you, you stick around and call pots like that? With, with this thing here you open?
Well, dude, you're not opening this to fold it when you make a king, so, yeah, yeah. Yikes.
You scam yourself here. King six, I'll just curious.
It's a pip and a half.
I mean, the results are, yeah, he lost his hand, but the guy, he's gonna win that pot a lot of times when they barrel bluffs twice.
If you're on the button, I mean, I don't mind it, right? Not on, on the button, I raise it. On the button, it's on the cusp, but on the cutoff, it's too much. But although there are circumstances where you might wanna start loosening up.
So why are we three X in here?
Exactly, you did it once again, right? You had a scheme, one three point five, now you have a three X. Are you trying to signal your, to your, that you have a good hand?
I learned this today that I do this, maybe by, by autopiloting. I shouldn't do this.
Oh, but you did it specifically with two really good hands.
Yeah, yeah, and he.
Let's see what you do on the flop. Let's see if you jam flop.
Oh, my god. What they're trying to say is you just wanna standardize your pre-flop sizings.
Um, do we ever limp aces from the cutoff?
No.
No.
No?
That's not necessarily.
Your best sizing, if you're deeper, you can open big. Like, if everyone's playing a hundred effective here, three X is fine, but you're shallow, you just go two X here.
So to help you out, David, um, if you're very shallow in certain scenarios, you do limp aces sometimes, but for this scenario that you're specifically, if you're asking specifically about this one, no, you don't.
But you'd also have to have other hand that's your limp to protect your limping range when you do that too, right?
Well, yeah, well, exactly.
You can check raises some frequency.
Can you? I was thinking about it. What's attractive here?
The hearts, the overcard.
We get a better king to fold?
Yep.
The pair board?
I think it's gonna like, uh, it's gonna like the worst ones a little bit better.
You're not gonna get a better king to fold, no. I don't think you're folding king. I mean, they, like, they might be, they might fold.
Nine, what do you think king nine does? What do you think king jack of club does?
Yeah, they're, they're not gonna fold.
Yeah, but we have, we have a really, really wide range here, and I think we're gonna be bluffing from the bottom up. So. I think this one might be a little bit too high up in the range that it might just call.
You don't have to win it on the flop either. Like, you had, you get them to fold on turns and rivers, so like, I think pretty sure this is gonna mix.
Ken is right. It does mix some. It folds mostly though.
Yeah, and I'd rather raise than call, honestly. It's just a more effective way to get, to win the chips, to be aggressive.
I'm calling.
Yeah, you gotta see a flop, man. Oh, that's a good flop. Uh, I like calling. You're letting him off the hook again.
Yeah, it's no good.
Yeah, it's already, it's already a really small SPR, just call.
Your bluffs, what do you check raise bluffing there? All in.
Well, maybe nine, ten, but it's more so like, what is his value range continuing with? Like, it's just over pairs. Basically, like, you're either cooler-ing the guy or you're never getting the rest of the chips here.
Yeah, this is just a call, David. What the heck are you doing?
This is just a call.
Yeah, definitely, definitely a call. Because the board is dry and it's low, like, it doesn't connect well with his three betting range except for his overpairs. And um, you wanna give him opportunity to bluff.
Yeah, and you, and you basically block his best value that he could probably have.
Right, so top set is specifically bad.
So you could have probably three bet this.
Maybe.
And we're short though, so call is probably fine too.
This is a fine option to mix. It definitely mixes, I think.
Yeah, I liked three betting the off-suited version better than the suited version. I think it's too strong to do that.
I don't know, man. Take a look. I think it may mix. I don't know. I, I, I do call here mostly, but with my theory hat on, I think it probably does mix.
All in, holy crap.
Twenty-five bigs? Yeah, we are. Yeah, it's king, it's queen, it's jack, twenty-five bigs, makes sense. So we should be all in, yeah.
Yeah, I don't find enough jamming, to be honest, in that spot.
What do you mean?
I said I don't find enough jamming in that spot myself.
Ace king, it's easy, right?
Yeah, for sure, very easy. I wonder if, like, ace king may be too strong. No, it just jams. The suited one is where it starts mixing.
It's king, it's queen, it's jack?
Yeah, I find ace queen, I find ace king, I find these middling pairs.
Bad special. And it, and the suited Broadway ones.
Yeah, yeah, those two.
Although I probably would get more aggressive with the king queen too.
Okay, so you pull the trigger at twenty, this is good. I like a raise. All right, multi-way in position, I would probably bet small here.
Yeah, I think you can bet small or check.
You could, for sure, absolutely.
I would check now, I think. Just go to small blind, defend it with the big blind behind him. Like, they got something pretty good here, probably.
Oh, what do we do here? Do I hate this? I don't know if I do. Cuz he's gonna have, like, you, you still get, you put a lot of pressure on jack ten.
Um, yeah, we beaten jack ten. Uh, the queen gonna fold yet? Like, if you can get, get in the fold of queen here, I think it's great, but.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
If he has flats with, I guess, under pairs, fives, sixes, sevens, but I mean. Pretty narrow range we're targeting, I think. And he has a ton of folds. His range is so tight, free flop, and he folds a lot of it. Like, all his bricks just fall with the big blind behind him, right? So he doesn't have much here that's not good.
He's got like some nine, ten, some jack ten.
He could have some diamonds. I don't like.
Yeah, suited ace six, ace six diamonds for sure.
You know, like, when you bet the turn here, I, I actually, I don't know if I hate finishing it off here on the river, just because, like, you should have a lot of king X here, but this is, this is dicey, man, dicey.
Not having a diamond is probably nice.
It's gonna be dicey.
It's just really difficult to look at, try to surmise hands, I think, and.
Just remove the big blind. Yeah, move the, move, remove the big blind.
Dramatically change the small blinds flop, the defending range is the thing, dramatically change it. Because he's not gonna defend air.
Yeah, he acts first, so I mean, like, he's gonna defend what he's gonna defend versus the big blind being there, right? It's not like he makes the decision after the big blind folds.
So a flop, a small flop bet is fine.
Mm hmm. The three pairs, I wouldn't be surprised to see doubles here.
So my point is, when we see bet flop, small blind's gonna defend, is gonna fold more than normal.
Yeah, that's true. On the flop, he is. He's gonna continue with a stronger range, you're right.
So this is where this is gonna fall apart a lot.
So it's mainly a check. Wait, this is out of position, is this? This is the small blind, check the small blind.
He's got under pairs in range still. I think they all go away, like, some of these slow connectors are probably all gone, unless they're diamonds.
Well, we, we won't know unless Louis checks and makes a bet again.
Okay, sorry, Joey, we have a lot of back noise. Amuse yourself whenever you want. Uh, check on the turn?
Yep. So ace five. Can double barrel. Now, fit, you gotta finish the simulation, though. After you double barrel, do you triple it off? Excuse me.
What was the river?
King of hearts.
Yeah, I mean, this is dicey, cuz like, I, I, I'm still convinced that, like, small blind's gonna have about a third less hands on the river.
Just check.
Than what we have in this sim.
You have, you don't left what they signs on this river. So flop and turn, kind of okay, river, plenty. The weather is plenty in Macedonia. I had to get up for work, did. Oh, we just had a bit of back noise. Oh, I know. Yeah, I knew that, but um, the bet, the turn, was it double barreling there in G T O wizard? Yes.
Heads up, yes.
You should play check here. And I like the fold when the big blind calls. I think that's good.
Is this a bit wide or it's good?
It's okay. This is definitely okay.
Definitely good.
Yeah, it's definitely good. Are you saying you fold jack ten from the cutoff, Louis?
There's no chance.
Seventeen big blinds with a big booty over my head against into a one hundred fifty big blind stack?
I mean, this specifically, given that, I might, I would tighten up quite a bit here because that guy is gonna be here to roll some heads, right?
Yeah.
Out of our ICM, it makes it more of a fold, but like, we don't even know where we're at in the tournament.
I don't necessarily like that.
No, you can't call this guy, man. He's just gonna, he's gonna wreck you so often here.
Yes.
We won the tournament, so maybe we wreck him.
Yeah, that's true. He's probably just gonna donate all of that hundred and sixty big blinds to us.
Oh, I remember this hint.
So pre-flop raising is fine.
You're not gonna love it.
Uh, calling the three bet is a disaster.
Yeah.
It's a minor disaster, but it's, it's wide, right?
Dave asked me not to spare him, so.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. This is. Is it? Now, that's a hundred percent fold all day.
I mean, you're folding king ten off, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ace ten off, what are you doing with ace ten off?
Ace ten off is a call because it's late position against.
Okay.
See, I'm a, I'm a little more polite than Louis is with a lot of things, Dave, so if I say, like, this is probably not good, it's the same as him saying this is fucking terrible, so.
As long as we get the message across. I think when it hurts, it sticks around longer.
Oh, you're crazy.
David, Jesus Christ, what are you doing now?
Dude, honestly, like, what do you expect the guy to do? He called a three bet, like, and he's got a backdoor flush, a gut shot and middle pair. I think you gotta, you gotta go here.
Scan the guy on the river, let's go.
Dude, you got, you got really lucky here.
No, no, he's not lucky, he's a scammer.
Yeah. I remember this hint.
I think if you call that, you gotta stack off with it. It's just, that's, that's, that's why we don't call it, though. That's why we don't call it, because you don't wanna stack off with it.
Jesus Christ, they're calling it three bet here with jack ten off.
For a thirty or stack.
Yeah. Crazy.
Okay. Um, check raise, this is good.
That's high.
I would go, I would go a little smaller, but I think playing check raise here is good.
Seven's probably good, six, six point five or seven, I guess.
Eight.
Yeah, yeah, see, it's, it's not too bad. Eight, six, he's a little large, but it's fine. It's about a big blind big.
Oh, yeah, it does like the big size mostly.
Uh, okay, so let's think about this for a second. This guy is, what's gonna be more profitable, playing call here?
Yeah.
Or playing four bet here? I think I like playing call, personally.
Yeah, he just saw us call him up with a jack ten.
And we saw he three bet ace ten off, so he's got.
This is the other option, right? It's, I mean, it's all too wide, it's good, right?
I think you should go a little smaller out of position. I think you should go a little smaller out of position.
Yeah, it's too much of your stack.
Oh. I think I like playing call there. I think it's gonna yield you.
Yeah. Yeah, you just let him off the hook.
It never calls. The machine never calls.
Well, it jams.
Honestly, that's what I would have done, to be honest.
I don't hate jamming, but I think, um.
We went quite deep enough to uh, four bet, honestly, without making it really awkward and like obvious.
I'll be, like, the obvious answer is King, King, four bet, get it in. But I think with the past history with this villain that we just saw like five minutes ago. We get so much more value by just calling there.
So I don't think it's a C bet without the diamond in our hand.
You could probably justify it. He's got two overs and a gutty, but a diamond would obviously be the, that preferred option.
Not three, not three ways. I don't think I bet this three ways.
Check. Start my soup.
Alright.
All ones?
You gotta continue one street here.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a bit nitty, but.
Yeah, on a parent board, ace king might still be good.
Yeah.
So this is.
The table starts to be empty here, so maybe we're getting uh, deeper in the weeds.
This is probably not too bad. It's, yeah, I think this is okay. I think this is okay.
I'm sure this is probably hand natural, some, some of its bluffs from pre-flop.
I think you would, you wanna go a smidge bigger if you're going out of position, but I think this is okay. And I like this. Yep, I like the C bet on the flop too. You have all of the, the big pairs, so. Oh, happy days. Uh, you can't, I don't know if you wanna fold, no, you can't fold here. This is a four better.
This is a four.
A four bet or a call for sure. You can't fold, it's too good.
Yeah, ace five definitely mixes some four bets in.
He is, uh, this guy has three bet you.
I'd be ace five suited.
He is three bet you at least four times. So like you.
Go all in here, seven percent of the time, or just.
Uh, yeah. I, I would.
Over special.
I would be very cautious at this stage of the tournament, doing that kinda shenanigans, but.
Yeah, I think we're eleven left right now or twelve.
Yeah, dude, if it's eleven left, you're definitely never jamming. This is not accurate for this scenario.
Okay, we didn't chip up yet, so no final table yet. Final three table, I guess.
Did you have a massive stack? Uh.
I'd like a C bet on the flop.
Yeah. This is a, this is a good C bet spot. C bet small.
Yeah.
You just kinda lose the pot when you check here too much.
Yeah.
You're not converting like your trash hand into uh, EV, positive EV. You're just letting him go a lot.
I like this race. I think it's a good one.
Yeah, I think it's pretty good.
Happy day.
Easy life, easy life. So the click versus the call, what do you like best, Louis?
I'm going all in. And you, I am never messing around here, because this guy. Could lose his mind every now and then and just call, then we see an ace I flop, then next thing you know, he has a three suited.
Yeah, that's fair. I, I like the click or the jam, I guess.
When I see this, this is my money, it belongs to me. I have Kings, a rep, this is GG, this is a zup. This is all the cookies in here now. You wanna tell everybody that this is your money.
Would you shove aces as well?
Yeah, that's uh, ace.
And if, and if freeze out, I think he can call this, but in a PKO, you. You, you don't want other people searching for a cheap bounty.
Yeah.
We're also disrespecting the initial opener. That guy's got seventy-four, like you, you don't need to give him a price to call here. You need a raise, I think. So this is good.
This is.
Th- this is a bit wide, but it's whatever, man. If you're like final table bubble, like this is what I would call a logical expansion. But the way, honestly, the way you're playing post-flop, you're not gonna be able to convert these type of hands into profitable plays.
That's right.
You're playing too passive, like you should be C betting a flop like this because you have the heart, because you interact with the five.
Jack eye board.
Jack eye board, like you need to put this guy in the blender, and if you're not putting this guy into the blender, you don't need to expand with these types.
Costing yourself easy here.
Yep. So play check, check and. Okay. Raise, um, I like calling here, this deep final table bubble. I like calling there, I think that's really good. I'm glad you didn't raise.
And whenever. You're on this kinda spot, villain checks the turn, I think you need to blow bananas.
Yeah, I'm going, I'm going big, I'm going big here. Well, okay, so let's think about this for a second. This is a very expensive pot. This is by far the most expensive pot. You can almost like, you're gonna set yourself up to win the tournament off a spot like this. So do you want to go something a little more mergey like sixteen? And then play really big rivers, or do you wanna distribute it on turn and river equally, like pot and then? Fifty big blinds and whatever it is.
Um, well, the villain only has fifty-six left, so about. Twenty, I think, sets up.
I think I would.
Twenty looks like it's, twenty looks like it's geometric.
Checking here is a disaster.
Oh dude, honestly, checking here is, I can tell you like playing check here, you're costing yourself easily a hundred bucks in like equity. A hundred dollars, like you're just burning, burning right here, this close to the end of the tournament.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you wanna get, you wanna set up to get stacks in.
Mm-hmm. Like honestly, you have a very, very, very strong hand and you need to get, you need to get big blinds here. Like, okay, he's gonna have a hand like queen, we'll say like queen, jack of uh, clubs here. Like, he's gonna call. If he's got ace, jack of hearts here, he's gonna call.
Like, I'm gonna, I'm gonna expand my vocabulary for you here. This is a catastrophe. Checking here is a catastrophe.
Yeah, honestly, this is, this is probably one of the most expensive, like. Okay, uh, man, so what happened? So like. All of his draws don't get there, so now you're not getting paid by basically anything except for a strong ace here. And you go small, he call.
He was calling you on the turn, man.
Yep, that's what I'm saying, dude. Like honestly, ace jack, this is what you're targeting. Like if you bet sixteen on the turn and jam the river, you've put this guy into a complete blender.
Yeah, your check costs you at least like twentyish big blinds here.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, this is a catastrophe.
Yeah, you, you might have been able to get all of the chips off of that guy. Maybe doubt, doubt it, but maybe.
Okay, so Dave, the best thing not gonna happen here. With a bucket bear like this here, what's the best thing that could ever happen?
Hit the set.
You hit the set, and then if you hit the set, do you wanna be heads up, or you wanna have a bunch of players in that?
You're right.
So what, what do you think you should do here?
Call.
I like calling. This is like my standard strategy, because you just wanna scam people, right? You wanna hit your seven and then find a way to scam somebody.
You know, man, like, I don't mind, I think playing aggressive from this spot versus these two player, players is very good. But this is not the hand to do it for the reasons Louis kind of outlined, like, it's just not gonna perform very well and. You, you just, you don't need to do it. You don't need to do it.
You're calling, look at this. Easy call.
Yeah. Like, if you had ace five suited, maybe ace nine suited, maybe ace five off. Like those hands, I think are way, way more attractive to apply pressure here. Let's see, like, yeah. It's, it's fine. Um, one big blind or this is good. I would shut it down, I would fold.
Yeah, I would fold as well, as I always has the things.
You don't beat anything here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Good. This is a good bluff combo. I like raising here. Uh, this is kind of advanced stuff, but you can apply a mountain of pressure to this guy. I don't, I don't like calling. I like folding or raising here.
Yeah, go, go no about seven.
I don't like calling with this type of hand either.
This hand plays very, very easily as a three bet, because you're just gonna basically get folds, and if you get pushed back, you can fold. Um, post-flop, you are kind of in no man's land, and it's gonna, you're gonna struggle to play this post-flop.
Hey, it's not raising a lot on the flop. I thought it would be raising a lot.
But it is, it is raising pre-flop.
Yeah.
It's also not an ICM adjusted simulation for final two tables.
Yeah, I agree. I like this bet. King, I, oh. Okay, plenty.
Uh, call's good. I like call.
Are you not going all in here?
Okay, so that was the question, right?
Definitely.
I don't think, I don't think this is a sixty big blind hand.
No, like, but this guy, what do you think he does with bucket jacks? Sixty bigs deep, this deep in the waters.
Well, so like, what do you do if you call here and he jams over the top?
That's why I don't call.
Well, it's kind of the same, it's kind of the same story, right? So like, in one scenario, you're isolating yourself versus the same range that is gonna isolate if you call, and you lose the pot regardless, or get lucky. Or you call here and give him the option. And like, I mean, do you think he's gonna be bluffing on the final table bubble with like ace five here to push you out for a bounty?
Oh my goodness, I, I wouldn't bet on that. I don't know. I don't know, man, what they're up to.
Well, he's been aggressive. He's been aggressive.
Yeah, he's been aggressive too. So it's like, yeah. Like calling off of ten for sixty here is a disaster. I wanna close the door to him playing the pop.
Yeah, but I, the way I play this, I play call, and then if he jams, I fold.
If you jam, he's still gonna, if he happens to pick up the same five hands, he's still gonna go all in with you.
Yeah, but I'm afraid.
For bet you.
Sometimes he calls back with, who knows what.
Trash, right?
No, I don't, I don't think he's, it's a eighteen, sixteen big blind bet. I don't think he's just gonna call with complete trash.
If this guy just won't, if this guy had say he has a big bounty, two hundred, five hundred dollars. This guy has king, queen off too. What do you think he does?
But Louis, also, you do know that near the end of the tournaments, the chip stacks are so large that the bounties reduce. In value.
They reduce in value, but it could be a very big spot.
Well, so like, here's the equation you have to sort out in your head, alright? So do you play risk averse? That way you can get away from cooler situations, or do you box him out from hands like ace, jack offsuit and king, queen suited? That have to fold versus your jam.
That's what I would like to do, but I don't know, right? Who knows, right?
You don't know, right? Like, it's, it's a tough equation to figure out. It depends on the crazy guy, really.
Yeah.
How crazy he is. Like, I mean, this guy obviously has got you pegged, like he is targeting you.
Where are the other players?
Might be final two tables.
I think you could jam this pre-flop.
Did this guy lose his money here? Is that what happened? Yeah, he lost.
I think blinds go up. That's honestly, that three point five there is probably fine.
There we go. Final table.
This, yes, probably final.
Open the pocket there, so, okay, well, we're gonna call.
Are we? I think I would fold, even versus that.
Oh my goodness.
Here we go.
King on the thorn, we might get away.
Here we go. Let it go. Get out of here, please. Thank you.
Look at the rabbit.
So this is too big, I think, but six and a half. I would go like five and, five and a quarter, five and a third, something like that.
Yeah.
He's only got fifteen behind. Uh, I like seeing a flop here. I would probably play this pretty passively. Yeah, I, I would play that probably similar. This is wide.
Yeah.
This is pretty wide too, I think. This might be okay.
Yep. Final table, I. It, it's either wide, it's either wide or big blind, or.
Look at the big blind, Joey. He's got seven. Okay.
This is a mistake for sure.
Yep.
This is fine. Um, I would maybe go a smidge bigger, but I think it's fine.
Call.
Call's good. Oh, top and bottom, dude, okay, so.
Protect the calling range, right?
Yes, I am calling here a hundred percent of the time. You do not wanna play a big pot with this guy six handed when you have this many chips.
Yeah. So usually top and bottom at chip EV and general at GTO, it's gonna protect our calling range. Now we add the ICM implications, you don't wanna play a big pot against him or him. Cause it's like, it's gonna, you wanna.
Lighting money on fire. They're gonna be able to apply enough pressure to you to really make your life miserable with these other three guys.
If you check raise, you have to barrel this time.
I would say so too. Uh, that's probably good, yeah.
And then, when you bet this river and you don't bet the thorn, diamonds, would call this thorn, never call your river bet. Spades, the hands like, uh, I don't know, uh. Jack, uh, queen, jack, they don't pay you on the river unless they hit, whereas they pay you off sometimes, so. So you need to bet this thorn, and on the river, it's kind of a whole bunch of stuff, great, so it's like.
It's dicey, man, playing big pots with that guy right now.
Yeah.
But, um.
You wanna check maybe your pre-flop of an inside, uh, range. You're a bit wide, honestly.
This is a bit wide, yeah. Um, yeah, I probably don't do this.
You never see that second pair being multiple. That's, that's, that's not good at all.
Alright, so play check. And yeah, now you gotta fold. Uh, easy fold. Okay. Bit wide, but it's alright. Good C bet. I like that C bet, and now. Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go another bullet here.
Yeah, I think so.
I like, I like five on the turn or six.
Think about if he has a hand like ace nine of clubs, he breaks the thorn, he kinda has to fold when you barrel again, right? So you get better aces to fold, and then, yeah, you pick up equity.
Now you let it go. Um, I think I like probably folding this. Okay. That's, oh, he raised you? Oh my god.
This is an easy fold pre-flop. And your big stack against big stack, all your offsuit ace here folds. You defend like ace nine or ace ten, that's it. So because you, when you get in a cooler spot like this, it costs you a fortune.
To be honest, man, like, I don't, I don't hate how you play this post-flop. I still think I find a fold on the river, because. What do you beat?
Yeah.
What do you beat, man? You beat his bluffs and that's it. So you're relying on this guy to raise you with a bluff on the turn and then follow through on the river, which clubs are out there, but.
I really tried to. I really tried to fo- to find the file, fold here, but I, I couldn't.
I hear you, man. It's tough, dude, like folding, folding trips like here, but I, I think folding there on that river, it's, it's too costly otherwise. So you jam there, you got called, you win. Um, this I would fold. You gotta be respectful. You gotta be respectful. Uh, this is probably okay to open, but folding's good. I would probably not open this. C bet's good here, though, when you. C bet's good here though, when you do open it, I think.
Yeah, you're way out blind with your ICM pre flop ranges.
Um, limp here is probably alright into that guy folding, playing very passively blind versus blind. I'm folding here, not playing this pot.
I am as well.
This is, this is, okay, so think about it like this way. You are blocking the bottom of his range when you open up here. Like these are like nines are like valuable cards you want in his bluffing range perhaps, which he should. Honestly, it's like a pit below what he should be bluffing. This is pretty wide. And the chip arrangement is such where there's a twenty, a twenty and eight. So you're in a third, three-way tie for third place. So you, you have to be respectful here, like, um.
Yeah, if this guy has aces, you're just GG. And it is gonna happen a lot, not more than you think.
Well, even at that, you don't want to race against ace king with, with this stacks.
Actually, you don't want to flip here, so it's a fold for you. You block ace nine, king nine, pocket nine.
There's not a equitable situation, an equitable outcome. That's not a nine on the flop for you there. I would play this very passively. I am going to call, but I'm not raising this guy ever.
I would, I would, uh, maybe pro, uh, block this turn, this river.
I, I don't hate blocking this because he can't raise you and you're going to protect yourself against better asex.
Yeah, maybe a blocker could be good.
This is good. I'm just all in here. I'm just going to put this guy all in for four big blinds. You got an ace, you got the spades. It's whatever. Okay, this is, this is a call, I think. This is, this is good, I think.
Well done. This is a good one.
Alright, now we're three-handed, um, two-way tie for second and then a big stack. So. You're going to have to play pretty aggressive blind versus blind with this guy.
Did he, did he open that?
No, big blind defense.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think it's a reasonable defend. Yep. Jamming's good here. Uh, limping's alright here. I think I still would just put this guy in. I don't want to let this guy see a flop at this point.
Limping, yeah, that's why. I don't think it's good. You want to limp here when you're twenty big blind, thirty big blind, forty big blind. But at this, like that, if you limp here, you let them realize equity. You just want to.
Yeah, this is a, uh, no free lunch zone. Like you don't let this guy see a flop for free and because of this, because of that.
Yep.
That's good. Um, yep, you want to let them play pots when they can? Like you, you don't want to be playing stuff here. I would fold this versus that.
I agree.
Yeah, this is, this is dicey. Like you got to get out the way. Okay, this is fine. Very good flop. Uh, don't check bet small.
You're costing yourself EV here by checking.
Call. I like call. Um, yeah, I think this is okay.
Who's gonna pay you?
Yeah, that's good. Um, okay, calls. Very good, very good, very nice. Alright, a six raise, call. Seems good. Checks fine. I would maybe raise this blind versus, or heads up.
Call again.
You gotta, you gotta call for sure. Check, let him barrel. You gotta call. You can't fold. What a flop. Look at that flop. What kind of a scam is this?
Yeah. Are we going to win this or what?
Yeah, I don't, I like raising. I like raising. Click it, call it. Check, it's probably fine. Fold it, whatever. It's not a good run out. Click it, call it. Uh, I like betting here a lot.
Bet, yeah.
Don't like checking. Oh, you got to continue, man. Like when you got the open ender, when your heads up, you got to be, you got to be wider.
Ooh.
Uh, this is, this is probably okay. It's a bit, this is a bit spicy, but it's, it's kind of whatever. You get there. Um, offsuit, I'm probably just folding here. I like raising these trashy ones, these trashy high lows. I like C betting small.
Yeah, that's a good sizing too.
Good. This is good. I like C betting small there. Call. Check, call. Check.
Do you ever do anything else but check here?
Um, well, yeah, I, I'm just checking.
Checking range, right?
Yeah, I would think so. You know, you shouldn't, I don't think you should be docking here too much.
I agree.
To be honest, I'm a little out of depth on like turn heads up docking strats though.
Oh, okay. He went with the dunk here, which I don't like at all. I don't think he has many games. Uh, yeah.
I just, I just don't know what it accomplishes, right? Like. You're not getting like better to fold.
But as we said earlier, David is a scammer. So you know why he does that?
Cause he hits the six of hearts on the river.
Because he's going to scam on the river. So opponent calls. Oh, this six, look at this.
It's even better than the six of hearts. It's even better.
What do you do? You put the guy in?
Yeah, for sure. Hundred percent. It's one to one pot. You just put it in. Looks fluffy.
Villain calls.
He calls with a queen. Look at that.
Uh, guys, uh, I have one question. Do we min raise heads up there always?
Min way, min raise where?
Uh, when you're playing heads up like this with these deck sizes, when we open.
Yeah, I like to min rate, especially the button.
Well, so it kind of depends, right? Like if the opponent's just jamming on you a lot, I would play a limp race, a limp jam strategy or a limp raise strategy more, but. This guy, man, he wasn't like really trying to put you in the pressure cooker. So I think a min raise is very effective here. As you get deeper, like if you're forty big blinds effective, you need to start making your raise size larger. To get like some of his hands indifferent, so they fold pre flop, but. This scenario, a min raise is very good, I think.
And then out of position, you can add a little bit more if you want.
So we got him and we got the W guys. So.
It's a good one, David.
Good game.
Good game, Dave.
Easiest scam of my life.
Yeah, let's.
Congratulations.
So I got, I took some note for you. I'm going to send them to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, got a lot to improve on, so uh, it's going to be nice. We're going to get better and better.
Yeah, Dave, honestly, this is, this is great. It's, um. Like you said, there, there's a lot of things that were pointed out that we could really help improve on.
Yeah.
And, uh, the longer you're on the community, the more content you kind of consume. It'll help out.
The better you'll get.
Yep, lots of volume. Thank you, guys.
It's a pleasure. Thanks to you for sharing. Putting yourself out there. Hopefully we didn't go too hard on you.
No, no, it was fine.
It was all fun. Alright, thanks a lot.